All right, Mayor. I was just... There's a couple of items that I need to bring forth. As number one was the lobby at the airport. The city council has authorized the mayor to do some renovation work on that facility up to $10,000. Since that time, we have received a grant from the Louisiana Department of Transportation Aviation. They have been offering us a grant up to $10,000 for matching funds. For us to be able to enter into that, we just got it in. And for us to be able to enter into that, we will need a resolution from the city council allowing the mayor to enter into the agreement with the state for us to receive the funds.
We've not done that already?
Huh? All you did was authorize the mayor for us to have up to $10,000 for the renovation costs on that facility.
That's right. Now, do we have that in writing? Do we have a resolution that's set up in writing already?
We have a resolution that's set up in writing.
Okay. Then, what's the date on the letter authorizing the grant? The date that you received the letter saying that the grant was approved?
Well, it's not approved yet. You've got to have this before it's approved.
Okay. The date that it was...
The date that it was sent to us and was sent out was July the 6th.
July the 6th? And the date that it was requested by the council gave permission on July was on June the 26th, February?
I believe that's correct. Very much, not a change.
We did this without having a written resolution at that particular time, given the mayor and whomever to pursue the grant, right? We gave permission for that.
We gave permission for the city to put up the funds of up to $10,000.
But we didn't have...
We did not have the grant in hand at that time.
No, no. We didn't have the revolution. We just made a resolution, right? By word. We didn't have a written resolution? We didn't have anything in writing?
At the time that y'all approved the...
Right.
No. No. Because at that time, that's when I came to the council and I said that we were going to pursue the possibility of receiving a grant from the state to offset some of the cost of this construction.
I understand. I understand. Now, at this particular time, you're asking for another resolution that we give you to pursue the...
Grant.
The grant?
The money, not me.
The money.
Right. Not me.
So, in the process then, do we have a resolution on the table that we can look at for that? Can y'all put one together for us in the next meeting that we're talking about?
Sure. I believe if I could y'all look at the topic right now.
We didn't... We should have been...
I'll leave it back. Right now. The resolution attached to it. That is... That's a resolution that authorized for us to... We have had a resolution for us to receive the $10,000. It's an aircraft assignment. We had that comment.
Can we make this resolution effective on the date that we meet? Because we don't even go to the floor. I see what you got, but I'm saying we like to have copies. I like to have copies. I like to make sure I keep all the resolutions. Can we do that on that date that we have this meeting? On Friday? Will that be today?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, I can't say it's going to be too long, but I think it will be.
We'll take that chance.
Yes. And the next thing that I have is on the airport. Again, the Louisiana Department of Transportation Office of Aviation has asked the town of Wentzboro Airport facility to grant them the use of $23,000 that will be transferred to the Falls River Regional Airport. Now, all this does, and we've been doing this for years and years and years, all this does is they pull money from our airport grant allocation, okay? And they will move that amount of money, which is $23,046, to the Falls River project. At any time that the airport enters into a grant application to receive those funds that is allocated to us, all we have to do is reach together. It's nothing... This is a loan. All they're doing is robbing from one account to pay to another account so they can, Falls River can complete their project. And on this, we don't need a resolution. All we need is council approval. And it is strictly a loan.
They got to authorize the mayor to sign this.
That's correct.
And I have to sign off on the thing that the mayor had approved of the council.
I entertain any questions?
I don't quite follow.
What is $23,000?
$23,000 is in the grant pool that is allocated to Wentzboro, okay? That money has not been used yet, okay? And there's a possibility it will be used in the state's six months for an overlay project of the runway, okay? But until that money is being used, then they are reaching out and taking $23,000 with our approval to use it on Falls River. As soon as we get our application and approved for the overlay of the runway, we can reach out and grab that money and bring it back. My, my. I know they have probably done something like that before. But it's been done here.
Years. Years. Here we go.
We need a motion of second. Give the mayor his authority to sign that.
I do that. Also, it has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Let the record reflect that unanimously.
Well, I have a couple more things just to bring your attention. Mr. Singer and I have been working with Congressman Alexandria to get permission from the Justice Department to allow the construction of the Gares Creek project to start, you know, for the beginning of it. We're waiting on that. We have been in contact with the Justice Department and we've been in contact with the developers. And all we're doing right now is waiting on them to come back with that approval. Is that...
Okay. Basically.
That's on that action. John, we propose still within issue of permitting. We'd ask for approval by the judge.
And we also are working with the U.S. Department of Commerce with a company located here in town for the export of goods and services to a foreign country. At this time, I'm not going to reveal who that is or what it is because it's in the central stages. But we are working with the U.S. Department of Commerce and getting their assistance and using their assistance in this project. I entertain any questions that anyone has. If not, I defer the rest of my thing to Mr. Kennedy. Main Street, bro. Thank you, Billy.
I have given you all each a copy of, basically, sort of an overview of Main Street. We were delighted that the mayor joined us at our Main Street meeting a couple of weeks ago. We have quarterly meetings. And I put in your packet just an example of our... This was our agenda for our Main Street meeting that we had, that the mayor attended. We have been talking with you all about the need for cooperative endeavor agreement between Mr. Cobb and Tabb and the mayor and my board of directors. We have reached what I think is a fair cooperative endeavor agreement stating what Main Street will do for you all, in turn, what we would like to have from you all to continue operations. And I put an example of that in your packet on the left-hand side. And I think, hopefully, everybody has signed to this point. And remind me, and I'll either get the original from you all or store it in my office, or you all keep that, and I'll have a copy in my office. But that way, everybody will be on the same page. Also, just so you all will know, there seem to have been some questions at a finance committee meeting or a special call meeting about where Main Street got its money and how we operate. This is a copy of our budget, the way it's been for several years now. And as you see, the city of Wentzboro is a huge part of that. I have also included in your packet an example of a Main Street quarterly report. Oddly enough, today is the deadline for the fourth quarterly report for this fiscal year. So what you have in front of you is basically all of the activity for all four quarters of this past fiscal year. And any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer. The next piece of information is really interesting, I think, in that it has some pretty staggering numbers for what Wentzboro Main Street has provided this community since its inception in 1987, '88. 145 new businesses, 959 new jobs, $11.5 million in private investment, $1 million in public improvements, over 3,400 volunteers with just a little less than 48,000 volunteer hours. That's for Wentzboro. And if you look at those figures from the state of Louisiana alone, you will see that the Main Street program, not just Wentzboro, but the Main Street program statewide and certainly nationwide, has done wonderful things. So, the next thing that I have in your packet for you to look at is the list of exhibits that the old post office museum has done since we opened in November of '10. And these exhibits will go through, the ones that we have booked now, we are booked, through August 5th of 2013. And the ones that we have coming up are pretty incredible. They really, really are astonishing. When people say a rural museum, they seldom think in terms of what we have here in our very own community. And it's something to be very proud of. So, we look forward to some good publicity for the city of Wentzboro and some really astonishing exhibits and some very nice workshops for our schools coming up. You know, if we can educate our young ones in the arts and what we're about, we're definitely a star of the day. Many of you are familiar with what we call our Main to Main activities. Every November, Louisiana Main Street provides a grant to the 34 Main Street communities statewide to do something, whether it's one event, two events, however many events, they choose to spread the little bit of money, that is matching money, by the way, out to bring visitors into your community. That's really the purpose of this. It's every November. Hours, of course, for... This will be the seventh year for our Found on 15 garage sale, yard sale, if you will, for the 28 miles that spans Highway 15 and throughout Franklin Parish. And I think everybody knows how many people it brings into our communities. It's pretty incredible. Plus, we have also put in two exhibits in the hopes that they will be sponsored as well. The Taste of Louisiana exhibit will go through a few days in November, and the Puzzled Louisiana Night Before Christmas, which is a historic look at Christmas in Louisiana, will start around the middle of November. So hopefully, they'll be part of that funding package that remains to be seen. One of the things, if you look back at the agenda, you will see what I refer to as an HPC report. That's the Historic Preservation Commission that you all appointed, actually. And the purpose for the Historic Preservation Commission is so that they can meet and we can decide how monies that come once again from the state can be utilized within our Main Street district, within our historic district, to keep it attractive, to keep it so that it maintains its historic integrity. We had one application this year for a matching $2,500 grant. So far, fingers crossed, Wentzboro Physical Therapy is still in the pool, and hopefully, they'll have a whole new look if the state officials grant our wishes. Anyway, the local Historic Preservation Commission looks at it. If it meets with our approval, we then send it on to the state. State officials look at it. We've made that cut so far with this particular grant. They then send it on to a panel, a nationwide panel, that decides among all the applicants what's worthy and what's not. One of the reasons, I don't mind telling you, one of the reasons that people like what we're doing is just all such as this. We are featured on the cover of Main Street's Louisiana, which was a book that was written just a few months ago, as a matter of fact. It's been a two-year project by a lady by the name of Ann Butler in St. Francisville. She told stories and took pictures of every Louisiana Main Street community throughout the state, all 34. Of all 34, they chose Wentzboro to be on the cover. Anyway, the Main Street Board of Directors would like for you, Mr. Mayor, to have a copy of this and keep it in the hall so we can write about ourselves. There are no further questions? Any questions that anyone has? I'm available at any time.
May I ask one? Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Okay. Other than yourself, who are the other members of the committee? The Main Street Committee? Other than yourself?
The Main Street Board of Directors.
Board of Directors, yes.
Wade Wally, Cass McCoy, Floyd White, Donnie Ellerman. Help me out.
Doyle Hassel.
Doyle Hassel. Kathy Morris. I'm leaving out someone I know. It's a lot... Hall Price, many merchants, downtown merchants, people who make up the historic downtown district. Any other questions?
Apparently not. And on behalf of those assembled here today, and those who are not assembled here today, we really want to thank you for doing an outstanding job with our Main Street and economic development. Thank you. On the finance table.
They're gracious enough to come and just to... Mr. Kennedy is an individual who has a produce row in northeast Louisiana, and Mr. Fields has worked in that field for many years, and I like him to be field free. Make a comment, Mr. Kennedy. Vote.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I believe everybody can give it pretty well from here. We did come to share with you, right, information, hoping that you all will be able to use in your decision to continue to pursue your venture of your farmers' market and your farmers' market endeavor. For those of you councilmen who may not know me, I am an agriculturist. For the last 50 years, as a matter of fact, I've been working in professional agriculture. Now, I hope to be able to continue to render a service to the Franklin Parish and where northeast Louisiana area relative to economic development from the standpoint of bringing in small farmers, of bringing in products and produce that will enhance the economy of our communities. And I say communities, not just Wentzboro, because if Mr. Kennedy brings, is able to sell $35,000, $40,000 of produce out of East Cal, West Cal Parish, certainly it's going to have economic impact on the entire northeast Louisiana. So, he is a producer, I'm an agriculturist. And as I spoke to Mr. Cobb the other day, I wanted to make it absolutely clear that I would like to have the opportunity to continue... I've retired. I'd like to have the opportunity to continue to render services through my expertise as far as agri-producture industry. So, if you all see the need or see the fit to bring in your market, you certainly have people who are willing to help you to, you know, to lift it, uplift it. So, I want to give Mr. Kennedy a chance to say a few things, to let you know just what he's doing, if he'll have the time. May I appreciate it?
Yes, please.
To Mayor Johnson, Councilman. I'm Eddie Kennedy from northeast Louisiana. And I said, if I ever got a problem, I'd never be a farmer. He was children, and I'm the only crazy one that's still on the farm. But I just love what I do. Now, I've been in... Right now, I'm supplying three farmers' markets in Mississippi. Now, in Louisiana, I used to supply one in Madison Parish, but it's got, that's another page, you don't need to turn it back because what has happened, has happened. But it's one in Natchez. I met Dr. McPhee, one of the... That's a lot of alcorn. They called it allcorn, but it's named alcorn. I told him, I say, "Yeah, I'll spell Al." "Yeah, they'll spell Al." "Well, I'll be down, it's allcorn." But anyway, at that market in Natchez. I met Dr. McPhee in a conference up in the Glanna, Georgia. We was talking about marketing strategies. He told us, he told me, he said, "It's not too far. We've got a market in Natchez. We don't have enough vendors to supply." And that was on a Friday. That Monday, I had a truckload of produce there. And when I got there, I seen the signs, "This Saturday is on." And I can't, I got more produce than they come just on a Saturday. So, the coordinator did come in, that on a Saturday, but they had a restaurant that was combined with the market. And I managed at the restaurant about it. He said, "Well, I don't know why they want to sell this on Saturday." And I said, "Well, what the quartermore said?" And he said, "Just go back there and set up and go to Saturday." I said, "Kenneth, set up the day because I seen just Saturday's on?" He said, "Yeah." And so, I went there about a month before I met the coordinator of the market. He told me, "Instead of coming on a Friday, come on a Saturday." And that's when I met the coordinator at that market. And so, that market, and I'm still as big as Ben there, that market from, still from Saturdays, half day on Saturday. Now, they run it from Tuesday through Saturdays. And also do the Bixburg market and the Port Gibson market. See, if I was 20 years older, man, I could do one. But I'm getting too young to start doing all that stuff. As long as I'm able to do it, I'm going to do it. Now, I've had two heart attacks. I've had a quite brutal, and everybody's telling me to take it easy, and I haven't found out what that is yet. I said, "If you find me out there stressed out in that field, I'm going to be happy doing what I love to do." And so, this here heart degree, you will not prepare for that when I go out in the field. I start early and stay late. And every child that comes through this society now, they either need to come up on a farm or when they get of age, they go take basic training, certainly because then they know the parent ain't being so mean to them. I have one to go in service. We come, went through basic training, and he was laughing at Sod trying to intimidate me. See, Sod didn't know that he had already went through basic training before he got it. And so, our children don't have nothing to do now. Got too much idle time. The system has got a plan. The system has got a plan.
From your produce operation. I think you could go on tour as a motivational speaker. Our entire nation needs to hear that. There's no doubt about it. And I really admire you for the things you have to say. And Mr. Fields, and I want to let everybody know that Mr. Fields, he is off in his services in our endeavor to do whatever we want to. Now, he works for a company that receives their income from USDA, and his services are provided to us at no cost. And we appreciate y'all coming and being with us.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the monthly financing statement to rock you back for the questions that we have.
Probably move in a second. All in favor, say aye.
We're going to adjourn this meeting next Friday.
I have a continuation of the meeting running.
Yeah, adjourn. Adjourn. Adjourn meeting.
Running.
Adjourn. I think it's probably a motion of second.
Did any more of our visitors have something that they'd like to say? If not, I'll...
I'm sorry. Your question I had, what time is this Friday meeting? This next Friday, what time?
It's half a time. What time? In the afternoon? Friday what? Four, four P. Good time? Seven, eight, nine?
Okay, that's 8:00 AM.
It's about time.
Friday, June, July 23rd.
Now, we need a motion of second. Adjourn.
I have a question about the problem of parking, handicap parking at Walmart. What's the situation? Y'all say they said don't write tickets. They say they didn't say write tickets. So what's the deal?
I have a question about the problem of parking, handicapped parking at Walmart. What, what's the situation? Y'all say, they said don't write tickets, they say they didn't say write tickets, so what, what's the deal?
Yes, sir. We, we are writing tickets at Walmart. The, the problem is when we get the call that there are handicapped, that there are none handicapped, uh, vehicles that's parked in the handicap zone, once those arrives on the scene, they might not have handicap license plates, but when you walk around to the front of the vehicle, they have a tag, uh, stating that it's a handicapped vehicle.
There's a thing about that, too. I mean, it, some of the tags is outdated, some of them belongs to people that's already died and they still got them in the vehicle so they can park a handicap. Then on the end of the handicap run, you got the striped lines, like the blue lines between there and the drive throughout. People's parking across the striped lines anyway. That's illegal parking, I mean, that's not a parking zone.
Yes, sir.
And I, I have, I have a lift which Craig has seen on my vehicle that swings around to the side. It's over three foot, time it hangs over and still more than that, time you got room below the chair. Well, I, I have swung it around right up against the vehicle. I saw one of the city police officers coming through, I flagged him down, showed it to him, he said, we can't write no ticket. Well, the woman manager comes out of Walmart, she gets a license plate numbered off the vehicle, goes back in there and paging them. That lady comes out and says, well, if you'll move, I'll park in your place. The city policeman gets in the car and drives off. But that's happened several times.
Was the car, the next to it wasn't a handicapped vehicle?
No. She, she was parked across the striped line. It wasn't even supposed to be parked there to begin with.
If that occurs, then are the tickets issued initially in the parking?
Well, this happens a bunch of times and I've seen the city policemen driving through and they say, well, they can't write a ticket, so I got Walmart worried about it. There's no need to complain anything, that's gonna get done.
I said, times that I've been, been personally, we've received those complaints, there were cars parked in the, uh, handicapped spots, but they all had the, uh, sticker hanging from the, uh, from the mirror?
Well, I was up there one day, sitting in the vehicle when my wife was in the store, two high school kids come up there and parked handicap. Their coach parked on the other side of the aisle, when he got out, he said, y'all not supposed to be parking in handicap. Oh, we're just gonna be in there a few minutes. All of them walked on in the store. That's not helping the people that need the handicap.
Yes, sir, I, I agree. I mean, but like I said, once they get up there and the sticker's hanging in the mirror, there's no way we can tell who's in the car, who's not in the car. It has a handicap sticker or a license plate?
Well, the handicap thing, talking about hangs on the mirror, they're supposed to have a ID card with it.
Yes, sir.
And if they're not, they, they always card them. If that's not their ID, uh, handicap thing, they'll write in the ticket. But they don't do it. I know they can't check everybody going through, but there's a bunch of them that they, they can tell that don't even supposed to be parking there. Just like a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever, that lady, lady from Down River Road was complaining about it. I done been complaining about it long before then. They said, y'all, y'all said y'all couldn't write tickets and, and, of course, the manager don't want it. Manager said, he didn't say nothing.
Well, I, I don't know about that, but what I, what I'm saying, sir, if a vehicle has a handicap license plate or, or display hanging from the mirror, you know, we don't have any idea who's in the vehicle. Now, could that be occurring, what you're talking about? It could be, you know, people do bar, uh, their others' vehicle or our handicap.
But they don't give them legal rights to park in handicaps if that car ain't parked there.
I agree with you on that.
And then that ain't helping about the people parking on the end of the aisle across the striped lines, well, you can't get to your vehicle if you parked there. If you're in the last handicap spot before you get through the drive-through thing in front of Walmart, on each one of them, you got striped lines, that's not supposed to be parked. But every one of them, you go by and look at, all through the day, four, five of them that be here to park across the striped lines just because they don't want to walk them across.
Like I said, I, I do it all, so, uh, the car that I've seen in the handicapped parking spot, all day, handicap license plates and stickers hanging in the mirror.
Well, I know y'all can't sit up there and watch us, there, it's going on and I complained to some of the office driving through. And I've got the same look, so, this is, United Stateswide about the handicapped, handicapped parking deal, either.
Yes, sir, and I agree with you.
Well, I ain't told them on complaining, everybody complains about it, but everybody's got told the same thing, so they just drop, that's the only reason I came to the meeting in the night to try to get a straight answer. I'm not, I don't live here in town, but I shout at them, I don't know why I pay for them, well, I'm, uh, people just keep them in business every time, I think, but, y'all want hollering about money in the city, why don't y'all issue illegal parking tickets up there, that way y'all have money.
Yes, sir.
I just want to know who, who, who's right. I mean, it was on TV, same like one had it in the paper, about, about the city police and, and Walmart saying, no, they said they didn't say it. You go up there to ask about it and they say, well, nothing to do.
I just think we could do anything, I'm, I'm, all the thing I'm saying, sir, is if we go up there, either the car that's in question has a handicap license plate or sticker hanging display from the mirror. So if, what, when we got there, the car was already in place. We don't know that, uh, who drove the car, there's a handicap. Once they get there, the car is parked in the handicap spot, has a sticker, I mean, license plate or hanging from the mirror.
What if, you got a bit, shut up.
Sir?
What if you got somebody that calls y'all up there and verifies that who got out of the vehicle?
If they're still there, we take complaints, most of the time when we get complaints like that, either they leave and once we get there, there's no complaint.
Well, I'll, I'll set you next time I call, I promise you on that.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, a ticket road, I mean, I'm tired of it, if you're sick, you go to this every day. Anytime you go up there, sir, enough of them start getting tickets over it, maybe somebody will stop it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, uh, for, for bringing that before the council. Is there anyone else who would like to bring anything before the council?